I'd like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order pursuant to school board policy 139, school board members' participation in meetings by electronic communications. School Board Member Diane Ralston will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. A motion's in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jessie also votes yes.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Williams, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion enter closed session. The motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712 that the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees and receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with division counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation involving employment and educational matters as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, 2, and 7. Three, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the legal requirements and procedures for collective bargaining by school board employees which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the acquisition of real property for the construction of an elementary school where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-37113. And five, to discuss with staff, the legal counsel on the disposition of real property owned by the school board in connection with the acquisition of real property for school purposes where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by Virginia Code 2.2-37113.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Williams, motion passed.
Okay. At this time, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session and return at 7 o'clock. Thank you. to, or returning to, open session from closed. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of April 6, 2022 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were held and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session. Action items. 8.01, a motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Outstanding. Well, that completes our closed session items. We are now moving on to our focus on our thriving futures. And tonight, good evening. We are pleased to continue this effort to recognize several outstanding students and coaches this evening. We will begin tonight with the Gainesville Magisterial District Representative, Ms. Jennifer Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my honor to recognize the state indoor track champions from Battlefield High School. So when I call your name, please give us a wave so the audience here and at home can see you and know who you are. Okay? So Aiden Beal, boys pole vault, state champion. Very, there you are. Austin, and I'm going to read these together because they were part of a relay, oh no, sorry. He's both. We'll do this. Austin Gallant, a champion in both the boys 500 meter and the boys 4x400 meter relay. And now we have the 4x400 meter relay, which are state champions, A.J. Rice, Winston Royals, also 4x400 meter relay, Cohen McNabb, and Pierce Collins. Part of that relay as well. So the coaches include head coach Jarrett Marley, Mike Frankel, is Mr. Frankel here? Meredith Switkies, Rick Rice, Ken Harrison, I don't know if the coaches are here, are they here? And Dave Manciagli. So I would like to invite Coach Marley to provide brief remarks. And I know Coach Marley very well because he coached my daughter when she was a bobcat. And they also, wasn't it the 4x400? She was a state champion for the 4x400 when she was a junior. So Coach Marley, if you would like to provide some brief remarks, it would be wonderful.
I just wanted to say thank you for this honor and this recognition. We are humbled to be here. And again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Wall. And congratulations to our Battlefield Bobcats. Now we will move on to the Coles District. And Ms. Lisa Zargarpur of the Coles District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a privilege to recognize Lena Gooden, girls long jump champion, and Viviana Rodriguez, girls pole vault champion from Osborne Park High School. Your coaches include Mike Feldman, Jerry McAvoy, and Andrew Ship. Principal Lisa Marie Kane is also here. And Coach Feldman, would you, yes, applaud, applaud, yes. And Coach Feldman, would you please share some brief remarks?
Well, it is, as Coach Marley said, a great honor and a privilege to be here and have these young people, not just the Viviana and Lena from Osborne Park, but all our state champions. I just wanted to know that both of our young ladies represent all that is good and decent and young people today. They are exemplars of leadership, courage, mental courage, resiliency, grit toughness, and they provide a great example for our program. They are just absolutely spectacular young people, and it is a true privilege to be able to coach them. Thank you.
Once a jacket, always a jacket.
Right.
I'm sorry, I stole that from you.
You stole my line. That's okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zargarpur. And congratulations to our Osborne Park High School champions. Weren't Principal Kane, weren't they, weren't you guys competing on Twitter for the best high school in the area? Did that finish?
It finished and we won.
We won! Woo! Congratulations. Add that to the list over there. Next will be Justin Wilk from the Potomac Magisterial District. He'll recognize our athletes from Potomac High School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to recognize Peter Dejean, the boys 55 meter hurdles champion from the Potomac High School, home of the Panthers. Peter's coaches include Jeff Foye, Dr. Keith Riley, and Chris Harrison. I will also mention Peter is a leader in his building, and I met him when he attended my Potomac Student Town Hall. Mr. Coach Foye will provide brief remarks.
I'd like to just jump, piggyback on what Coach Feldman and Coach Marley said, that it's a pleasure to be here. And it's been a pleasure the last four years coaching Peter in high school. He's worked hard. They make these races and these jumps and everything look like, you know, 10 seconds or 20 seconds is, you know, just quick and easy work. But it's two hours a day, five days a week, and 10 hours on Saturdays that these kids are putting in every day. And then I know a lot of these kids here are all carrying over 4.0 GPAs, 4.3 GPA for Peter here. And the hard work is seen by the coaches, is seen by their peers and stuff like this. But I'm glad they're getting the recognition they deserve for all the hard work they put in. And I'm giving everybody a round of applause here today. And Peter's one of those athletes that has taken the baton himself, carried it with pride, done everything he asked of him. And he's making a path brighter and wider for the next group of athletes to come through and do the same thing. And we're just proud for everything he's doing and everything he'll do at the next level. And we look forward to that. So thank you for having us. Much appreciate it.
Congratulations to Peter and Potomac High School. I will now turn this over to Dr. Superintendent Dr. Latonya McDade to help conclude this portion of our school board meeting.
Thank you so much, Dr. Latif, and thank you to the entire board for recognizing our student athletes. We are PWCS proud. You are amazing. Congratulations to each and every one of you from Battlefield, Osborne Park, and Potomac High School. You represent the best. And so I want to also acknowledge, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our leadership in the room, our principals who create the conditions for our students and for our staff to be able to thrive and pursue their interests and their passion, Ryan Ferrera, Battlefield High School, Lisa Marie Kane, Osborne Park High School, and Brandon Bowles at Potomac High School. Let's give a round of applause for our leadership. Thank you so much for supporting our athletic programs. I also want to acknowledge and thank our parents. I know how challenging it is to make sure that our students are getting where they need to be, being at practice on time, supporting their interests. And so thank you to our parents for all of your hard work and supporting all of the coaches and your hard work. Many of you put in an incredible number of hours as well because you believe in our young people, and we thank you for your service to PWCS students. So to close out this special part of our meeting, I want to note that we are so fortunate in Prince William County Public Schools because we have so many state-level, award-winning student athletes across the division. And we plan to recognize our students and their coaches in future meetings moving forward because we have so much to be proud of and so many students to recognize. So we'll be continuing the Thriving Future Series to recognize all of our athletes. So again, congratulations to each and every one of you on these outstanding accomplishments, and keep shining.
three. Another one, one, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Looks good. Very
Okay. Wonderful, Dr. McDade. Thank you so much. And I might add, we'll be recognizing athletes and other state winners, as well as in robotics and other activities. So it's not just our sports we excel in here in Prince William County. It's many, many things. I'd like to invite everyone to come up front, turn around, and we'll take a group picture
good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was fantastic. Thank you to everyone who came. And I'm sorry we're running a little bit late for this. I would now like to call the meeting, the public with the board, if you don't mind. Please come up to the front here. meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We'll start with the Pledge
Can I say something? Can I say one thing? Can I say one thing? I don't know if you
of Allegiance. Charlotte, if you want to help lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
guys know this. I know we're recognizing for state champions and stuff like this. But these kids are all Americans here. These aren't just state champs. We have all Americans here, and national champ, there's national champ in the room, not just state champs,
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
all Americans across the board. So just want to let you know that.
all.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Do you have a comment? Oh, you second. That's what I thought. Okay. Any discussion? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jessie, can you vote?
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Next will be citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they're called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour. First half hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, and second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified, or they'll be asked to step down. We have 10 speakers on agenda items and eight on non-agenda items. Speakers have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. When you're called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And I'll start by calling the first five speakers to the front. And I'd ask the audience, as I have in all prior meetings, to hold any applause and cheering as it is difficult for us to hear and it's difficult for folks at home to hear. And so I would ask for no applause, no cheering. And if that continues, we'll take a recess or we'll find another way to deal with that. So I'll start. I'll call the first five members. They can come to the chairs up front. Maggie Hansford, Amy McCarthy, Brandy Provenzano, Leslie Inman Tom, Mikel Lewis. Ms. Hansford.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, Chair Latif, and school board members. My name is Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file with the clerk. Thank you, school board members, Lily Jessie, Justin Wilk, and Lisa Zargarpur for adding collective bargaining to the agenda tonight. PWA has been working tirelessly on behalf of Prince William County School employees collecting 5,000 authorization cards from Prince William County School staff supporting collective bargaining. On March 18th, PWA filed a letter, affidavit, blank authorization card, and a proposed resolution, all of which were more than sufficient to satisfy this statute and require the Prince William School Board to vote on PWA's resolution on or before July 16th. We are so proud of our historic achievement of collecting the majority of signatures to move collective bargaining forward in Prince William County for our educators. I am grateful for the leadership of the school board members bringing the collective bargaining discussion to open session. Transparency and open dialogue will help us move forward and move the process forward in a way that benefits both students and staff. We are grateful to hear the rigorous discussion tonight about the importance of educators achieving a seat at the table. I'll say that it was no secret that PWA has been collecting cards. We've built a strong plan, and we collected the majority signatures in less than two months. What was a surprise, I think, is that we actually achieved it. Tired, overworked educators worked long and hard outside of their contract hours, achieving the unachievable, and I couldn't be prouder. Thank you.
Amy McCarthy.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Amy McCarthy, and my address is on file. I would first like to thank both Dr. McDade and our school board for allowing me to speak tonight on collective bargaining. I want to talk about the benefits for not just our teachers, but the students and the community. Collective bargaining will create better conditions for our students and educators. We've heard time and time again that students' learning environments are teachers' work environments. This is, this is actually completely true. We work where the students learn. And to create better limits on class size, identifying time for teachers and paraeducators to share effective classroom practices, addressing school and health and safety issues, would only ensure that teacher input into their own professional learning, all of which helps students thrive. Collective bargaining also creates an educator-led, educator-led answers to students' needs. Students perform best with lower class sizes. Collective bargaining will also help in this nationwide teacher shortage retain highly qualified and experienced teachers. Studies show that as teachers gain experience, their students not only learn more as measured by standardized tests, they are also more likely to do better on other measures of success, such as school attendance. Teachers' effectiveness increases at a greater rate when they teach in a supportive and collegial working environment, and when they accumulate experience in the same grade level, subject, or district. Collective bargaining will prioritize the safety and well-being of educators and students by providing the necessary resources for supports and the resources for our students based on their school's individual needs. And collective bargaining will support the fight for social justice and racial equity. I applaud many of the recent programs and incentives that our school board is implementing throughout the county. I have, I am personally an SEL coach at my, at my work site, and I love the program. I love what it can do for educators, and I mostly love what it will do for students. So I believe that we can work together, and we should have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Brandy Provenzano.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Latif, and Dr. McDade. My name is Brandy Provenzano, and my address is on file. I have taught in Prince William County schools for the last 20 years. I started back in 2002 at Potomac High School. I was a proud Panther until I moved closer to home and became a Battlefield Bobcat. People always ask me if I like living in the community where I work, and I do. I frequent the grocery stores and pizza places and car washes where my students work part-time. They see me out in the community and their faces light up. In turn, I feel like a celebrity when I hear the familiar "Mrs. P" screamed out of a passing car window with enthusiastic kids waving at me. My own children, not so much. I know my students' brothers and sisters, their cousins and their cousins' cousins, because I've taught in the same school for 18 years. When students graduate, we become Facebook friends, so I can watch them from afar and know that they are safe and happy and thriving. Sometimes they're not. And when I reach out to them privately, they are shocked that a former teacher from 10 or 12 years ago still cares enough to send a text and say, hey, are you okay? I've grieved with my families. I've grieved with my students. I've been to funerals and graduations, weddings, and baby showers. I've watched students who failed their reading and writing SOLs in high school go on to attend college, get master's degrees, serve their county, I'm sorry, serve their country bravely in the military, or actually chase their dream to become an artist or musician when no one else told them to do so. I once drove three and a half hours to watch a student graduate from an alternative program after they dropped out of my English 11 class. When I arrived, I realized I was the only person there to watch him walk across the stage. He looked out into the audience, searching for a familiar face, someone to cheer him on. That was me. I was there. These stories are all true, but they're not unique. I'm one of over 13,000 employees who have passionately dedicated their lives to their children, to your children, and to mine. I stand here tonight not as one person. I am many. Thousands of employees have already signed their cards in less than two months, not because they are greedy, but because they are desperate for hope. We would like to have hope that we can be respected and get a seat at the table, so we can share our stories about our students with you, so you know what they need. Thank you so much.
Leslie Inman Tom.
Hello. I actually want to thank Dr. Latif for shouting out to robotics, because I love robots, and I'm going to do a lot of that. But don't gavel me yet. I promise you, I am talking, I am talking on agenda. I am speaking out in support of collective bargaining. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to have this platform tonight. My name is Leslie Inman Tom, and my address is on file. Like many of you, I'm a proud parent of Prince William County School students. I'm also a special education teacher within the county. I recently completed my, completed my healing-centered training, and I was inspired by what I heard. Self-advocacy is one of the most important things I can teach my students. In turn, I feel like a celebrity when I hear the familiar Mrs. P. screamed out of a passing car window with enthusiastic kids waving at me. My own children, not so much. I know my students' brothers and sisters, their cousins and their cousins' cousins because I've taught in the same school for 18 years. When students graduate, we become Facebook friends, so I can watch them from afar and know that they are safe and happy and thriving. Sometimes they're not, and when I reach out to them privately, they are shocked that a former teacher from 10 or 12 years ago still cares enough to send a text and say, hey, are you okay? I've grieved with my families, I've grieved with my students. I've been to funerals and graduations, weddings, and baby showers. I've watched students who failed their reading and writing SOLs in high school go on to attend college, get master's degrees, serve their county, I'm sorry, serve their country bravely in the military, or actually chase their dream to become an artist or a musician when no one else told them to do so. I once drove three and a half hours to watch a student graduate from an alternative program after they dropped out of my English 11 class. When I arrived, I realized I was the only person there to watch him walk across the stage. He looked out into the audience, searching for a familiar face, someone to cheer him on. That was me. I was there. These stories are all true, but they're not unique. I'm one of over 13,000 employees who have passionately dedicated their lives to their children, to your children, and to mine. I stand here tonight not as one person, I am many. Thousands of employees have already signed their cards in less than two months, not because they are greedy, but because they are desperate for hope. We would like to have hope that we can be respected and get a seat at the table, so we can share our stories about our students with you, so you know what they need. Thank you so much.
Leslie Inman Tom.
I actually want to thank Dr. Latif for shouting out to robotics because I love robots and I'm going to do a lot of that, but don't gavel me yet. I promise you, I am talking, I am talking on agenda, I am speaking out in support of collective bargaining. Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to have this platform tonight. My name is Leslie Inman Tom and my address is on file. Like many of you, I'm a proud parent of Prince William County School students. I'm also a special education teacher within the county. I recently completed my, completed my healing-centered training and I was inspired by what I heard. Self-advocacy is one of the most important things I can teach my students, and our healing-centered approach training taught me that I'm supposed to, to model that behavior. Collective bargaining is self-advocacy. It is a way to get a platform for ourselves so we can advocate on behalf of not just teachers, but all of our world-class staff that we have in Prince William County. Collective bargaining will allow for all of our voices to be heard. Collective bargaining with Prince William County staff, like we're the whole reason that we can provide that world-class education. I've spoken to it, I've had a number of people from Prince William County Schools speak to it, and parents have spoke to this as well. But right now, I have a reputation to uphold in this county. If you give me two minutes on the microphone, I will talk about robots. So here I go. First off, I want to wish a good luck to our three Prince William County FRC teams. I like Supernova and Metal Jackets, who are on, right now, competing at First Robotics Regional Championship this season. Yeah, this season, I had the distinct honor of.
I gotta, I gotta keep you on topic. I gotta keep you.
No, please, I got it, I got it. I promise you.
We'll cover robotics at our next meeting.
This is about collective bargaining because it goes into all of the hours that our coaches, our mentors, our volunteers give, and we need voices so we can hype that. Whenever I MC at robotics competitions, that is my optimism being loud. I see the future, and you guys come in and you support us too. I've seen Dr. Latif, I have seen Ms. Zagapour, I've seen Ms. Wall at our tournaments. I know that many of you guys have students that participate in robotics. Here's why it's important, because we are standing to lose veteran and experienced staff members that support our students in robotics, not because they don't love what they do, but because they can make more money elsewhere. They can go to counties where they are being allowed a voice through collective bargaining. Robotics, my support of students and my support of teachers and our community through collective bargaining are completely on topic. I am so proud to be here as an educator, a parent, and a robotics advocate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mikel Lewis. And then after her, the next five who can come on and sit up front will be Katie Jefferson, Emily Cherry, Ali Imam, Stephen Lorenz, and Jeff Fuller.
Hi.
Ms. Lewis.
My name is Michael Lewis and my address is on file, and I'm here in support of collective bargaining. In the corporate world, employees will say, we need more help, we need more supplies. You don't hear the answer back, well, why didn't you just buy the supplies yourself? Why didn't you just work long and for free? Sometimes that's how it sounds with the teachers and what they're hearing. Over the past several years, educators and staff have worked under very stressful and extraordinary circumstances. They're doing it to ensure that the students are getting the best that they could give, many at the sacrifice of their own mental and physical health. It's time to give them a seat at the table, not just the table, but the one of the most important tables in our schools right now. Our new superintendent has shown she's intent on lifting Prince William County Schools to a much higher level. We have the strongest and most comprehensive strategic plan we have ever seen. We have a well-thought-out budget to build our division. It's time to include in this circle the people who will be actually doing the work. Teachers often purchase classroom supplies they need to meet all the modalities, making sure that every student has an equitable learning experience. They often buy other things like socks, underwear, books, rewards, snacks. Our special needs teachers come to school with an extra set of clothes every day because who knows what's going to happen. I've seen, you know, strawberry shortcake all down the front of somebody's shirt. TAs run around all day helping our teachers have more time with each student. The custodians reassure students that have thrown up all over the floor that it's okay, they don't need to be embarrassed or ashamed, it happens. Kitchen workers can change a cafeteria atmosphere with a smile. Bus drivers cover extra routes every day. The nurses put in how many volunteer hours, I don't even know, to make sure people got their vaccinations. All of these employees are working to ensure that every child learns and grows, so when they become adults, they can live and work successfully in a growing global society. Your School Board oath was a promise to do what was best, not just for you or what you want, not for your political lines, and not because you personally don't like the messenger. We need to remember that there's principles above personalities. Teachers and staff have done their part, and now it's time to acknowledge it by allowing collective bargaining. Prince William County Schools can be the example of what a world-class education really is, the full circle. We can keep our valued teachers and staff and make Prince William County Schools the place people want to work and Prince William County the place people want to live. I'm asking you to please vote for collective bargaining tonight. Thank you.
Katie Jefferson.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Latif and Dr. McDade. My name is Katie Jefferson and my address is on file. I have been a speech-language pathologist for the past 15 years and I've had the pleasure of spending the past nine years in Prince William County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to ask the School Board and Dr. McDade and parents and community members to support collective bargaining rights for all employees. While many others might have shared these warm and fuzzy stories that tug at your heart strings, I'm a bit more analytical and I kind of like data. So, since I have to collect it every day. Did you know that districts with collective bargaining contracts are generally characterized by better student outcomes across races and ethnicities? In a recent study published in the Yale Law Journal Review, researchers found that mandatory collective bargaining laws for public school teachers led to a welcome rise in SAT scores. And in another study published in the Illinois Update, a journal focusing on the economy, researchers found that unions increase worker productivity. A meta-analysis of economic studies shows that there's a positive association between unions and productivity in the United States. While unions have the largest impact on manufacturing productivity, the researchers find that unions have a positive and statistically significant effect on productivity in U.S. education by 7%. In the same article, the state-level data shows that average student test scores increase as unionization increases. Four different models were used, fourth-grade reading, fourth-grade math, eighth-grade reading, and eighth-grade math. There's a moderate, positive correlation between teachers' unions and better test scores, and I know people are concerned that it would be expensive, but the contention that unions play a role in misallocating resources, sending them away from their most needed, is a distraction from efforts to address the persistent nature of achievement gaps between advantaged and disadvantaged students. In addition to the extent that they are successful in reducing class size, teachers' unions have another positive impact on student outcomes. For every one, for every one student decrease in class size, test scores tend to improve by 0.8 to 1.1 points. Many people say, you know, if you don't like it, show it with your feet, walk away from your job, there's other jobs that I can get. I'm a speech-language pathologist, I think we all know this. But there's one problem with that. After one minute and 22 seconds it takes to actively scroll through the open positions, which equates to about 400 or 947 vacancies, I know that I wouldn't be doing my students a service. I do know that in the trenches that we don't have staffing to get special education students out into general education. We have students with loads of compensatory time that they are owed and that they deserve. We have students that can't get their high school level credit at the middle school level because we don't have teachers to teach.
Thank you.
So I invite you guys to consider collective bargaining.
Emily Cherry.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and members of the board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm used to teaching, talking to rooms of students, so it's a little bit nerve-wracking to talk to a room full of adults instead. My name is Emily Cherry and my address is on file. I'm a teacher in Prince William County, and I'm also the mother of two elementary school students in Prince William County Schools. I'm speaking to you tonight to ask you to support collective bargaining rights for Prince William County educators, because I believe that giving educators a seat at the table is what's best for all Prince William County School students. My children attend Henderson Elementary School in the Potomac District. Hi, Mr. Wilk. A few months ago, my family attended the Henderson Book Fair on the night of my son's birthday. As we walked through the book fair, every single educator there told my son happy birthday. Every single one. The principal, the assistant principal, my daughter's teacher, the librarian, the library assistant, teachers I had never met before. Every educator in the building had taken the time to care about my son, to get to know him, and even to remember his birthday. This is of course what educators do. We get to know our students, we love them, even on their very, very bad days. As a mother, I wholeheartedly believe that giving our educators a seat at the table will benefit my kids. When a teacher has more planning time, their students receive better planned lessons. When a teacher advocates for smaller class sizes, their students receive more individual attention. When a teacher doesn't have to work two jobs or more in order to pay her bills, she's healthier, happier, and she's able to give more time to her students. Every parent in this room can think of an educator that has loved their child well, that has made a positive impact in their life. Educators deserve a seat at the table. Collective bargaining can give us that seat. Everyone here tonight is on the same team. We all love and want what is, we all love our kids and we want what's best for the kids of Prince William County. Please give educators a level playing field. Let our voices be heard. Give us a seat at the table so we can keep doing the best that we can at the job that we love, educating your kids. Thank you.
Ali Imam.
Ali Imam, Gainesville District, and my address is on file. Respected Dr. McDade and Dr. Latif and rest of the School Board members, good evening and thank you for your hard work for Prince William County. Prince William Education Association's attempts to form a collective bargaining unit with PWCS may soon become a reality. I understand some people's concern about signature verification requirements, but I have total faith in the School Board that it will implement a reasonable process of verifying all petition and signatures in a timely manner, or decide whether such verification is actually needed at all. Nevertheless, it is very likely that we will soon have a collective bargaining unit for PWCS employees. But the real concern is whether our county or the School Board has enough budget to meet demands that this bargaining, collective bargaining unit may pose in future. We all recognize that our county has suffered a staffing shortage, shortage since the start of the pandemic, which has hindered plans to adequately address academic performance issues and recover learning lost while the schools were fully virtual for almost a year. This staff shortages have affected all kinds of school departments, from classroom teachers to transportation and food services. One goal of the bargaining unit is to bargain for our competitive, for more competitive wages for all staff, making the positions more attractive. And we believe that PW Digital Gateway can fulfill some of those demands the collective bargaining unit hopes to pursue in future. For example, PW Digital Gateway will bring about $25 billion in capital investment to Prince William County. Over $400 million in new annual revenue will be added to the county budget, and of that $400 million, $230 million would go to schools. We want our schools to succeed in every way possible and be compatible with other neighboring schools. According to a recent survey, Battlefield High School is ranked number one in Prince William County, but only number 18 in Virginia. We want more schools from Prince William County to meet the top 20 list. To do that, we need additional resources and money, which we believe PW Digital Gateway can provide. So I honestly request all of you, every principal, teachers, and students, to support the Board of Supervisors, to approve the PW Digital Gateway, and which can help our schools become one of the greatest in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Lorenz.
Stephen Lorenz, Gainesville District. Collective bargaining is just one example of future, future likely shortfalls in the county budgets. I strongly support collective bargaining. It's not just about the money for the teachers and the staff. It's a matter of attitude, it's a matter of access, and it's a matter of participation. The schools in this county are very important to me. I have a small tech company, and so I rely on the future, you know, tech workforce. I allow, I rely on the ability to attract PhDs and high-end people from across the country and bring them to this great county. One of the questions I frequently get asked is, well, where is the best high school? You know, where, where should I live, you know, to provide the best opportunities for my children? There's, as a small tech company, we have global reach. We sell instruments everywhere, well, everywhere we're allowed to, that I morally agree with, throughout most of Europe, India, Brazil, and so forth. Whenever I sell an instrument, you know, we earn income, we pay taxes, we pay local, local business taxes of different, different parts. That is different than a mom-and-pop shop down the street. Whenever they pay taxes, that money comes from their neighbors. The money I pay taxes with does not come from my neighbors. One concept I would like to introduce is a twist on an old environmental thing about thinking globally and act locally. I like people to push the idea of acting locally and taxing globally. Whenever we bring in high-tech companies that have global reach throughout the world, the taxes they pay doesn't come from their neighbors, or from my neighbors or from your neighbors. It doesn't come from our residential taxes. I really want to see the collective bargaining to be successful, not just for votes to pass, but you need the budget to actually drive it forward in a meaningful way. A good example of something passing last year at the board level was property, property data rights, I'm sorry, property development rights. They passed a resolution where farmers and landowners can sell to the county the right to build. It's a way to conserve land, great program. They have zero budget for it. None. This county, as I've said before, is, has great plans, high hopes, but there's no, there really isn't a funding stream to pay for it going forward.
Thank you.
I really encourage people to discuss these issues with our board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lorenz. Jeff Fuller.
Hello, Board, Dr. McDade, senior leaders, parents, teachers, neighbors. Well, I've got a first for you. I think this might be the first time I've come here with a positive response to a proposal from the School Board. So we can, I'm going to mark that on my calendar. Why? It may actually doom the thing. I object to the, first to the idea that you can't specify the data higher. I think that's a reasonable thing. I understand that you got rid of it for this case, so I don't know why we're even talking about it. I don't know why you'd oppose this. My primary objection to this concept that you're talking about is that the Prince William Education Association is part of the Virginia Association, Education Association, and the NEA. It is a chain of command all the way down to Prince William County. I think the unions have been egregious in this COVID era. I was going to wear this on my coat, but I'll just remind you of the coffins that came across in a, in a demonstration in November of 2020. Now, I know the union apologized and they're embarrassed by it, but I think it illustrates a kind of mentality that we find with union thug-like operations. I know some of you School Board members have probably taken some serious heat over this whole issue, but the problem is with the positions that they've taken on. Shots, mandates for masking, the moving goalposts where we insisted on vaccines for kids and there wasn't a vaccine. So those things leave a sour taste in the, in the mouths of parents, grandparents, citizens. And I think that the solution is to consider an alternative to your Prince William Education Association. Association as a representative. As far as I'm concerned, that whole last ship ought to have no place at the table, just simply due to their outrageous behavior in the last couple of years. They don't deserve a shot. Now, I noticed the union chief got to speak first. Congratulations. I wonder how that works. I asked the school board and the, somebody to tell me how that works. Do you get a date stamp? No date stamp. Well, nobody can tell me. So that's suspect. When 99% of the money given by the union structure goes to Democrats, progressive Democrats.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
So thanks for listening.
All right. Nick, please. The next five will be Jennifer Rakoski, Richard Jesse, Aileen Deveraux, and then the, well, the Forest Park High School students, Bryce Henderson, Grace Dubinok, and Jacob Bakoso, Bakosa.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Rakoski. I reside in the Okaquan district, and I'm speaking as an individual. At the March 16th school board meeting, I mentioned that the division may not be renewing its Near Pod license for next year. A few educators reached out to me echoing their concerns. Another educator reached out about Google. Apparently, the school division is removing Google Drive's interface with Canvas as a way to submit assignments. While Office 365 is great, the language arts teachers I spoke with said that Google documents through the Canvas platform can allow more feedback and collaborative features than Word currently can. Why am I mentioning all this? I'm asking the school board to direct the school division to please survey all of its staff members on what technology tools they are using in their classrooms. These are tools they have utilized and enjoyed with their students. To take something away they are successfully using is just another burden to our overworked educators. Please survey your teachers, teacher assistants, ITCs, and students. Have a conversation with them about what is working and not working, not just an office form. Along the same vein of listening to your staff, please stop the focus on lost learning. Adding additional tutoring or adding in missed curriculum with high-stakes testing is overwhelming to your staff who are at their breaking point. They are focused on the large increase in student hostility, disrespect, and disciplinary issues. There is a lack of enforcement in the code of behavior, leaving the teachers to try and manage without support. You may have heard Maslow before Bloom. We hear it all the time. This is the idea that educators should meet students' basic needs for the safety and belonging before turning to challenging academic tasks, is one that guides the work of many schools. This next portion I'm going to read is from a Twitter thread by Dina Lay. I felt it was too good not to share. What is the solution? I don't know. A cultural and societal shift. This country needs to treat teachers like the educated professionals they are and pay them. Pay them what financial advisors make. Pay them what corporate office workers make. Support them and treat them with kindness, or else schools will close due to lack of teachers and staff, and many will never reopen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard Jesse.
Before my time starts, I'd just like to point out that we have a House of, Virginia House of Delegate member, Susan Malalado, here tonight with us. My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. There's very seldom that former school board member Willie Dirch and I agree on anything. But last meeting, we did agree, and I still agree with him, that the school board needs to reconsider how we are running the citizen time. Tonight, for example, this young man right here wanted to speak, and other people wanted to speak, and they can't get on time or get in within the 20 people. So I think we should reconsider that. Now, one thing that Mr. Dirch did say that I don't agree with was that he could not understand, and that in the former board was so good, but he could not understand how we have all these security officers here, how we have all the police officers here. So I'd like to remind the public why we do. Because when Loudoun County was having all the trouble and disturbances, that flowed down here to, to Prince William County. And at one meeting where Mr. Dirch and two other board supervisors were out in the lobby, we had people coming into the boardroom, one guy with a bullhorn, and forcing their way into the board, and we couldn't get them out, and we had to delay the school meeting for almost two hours. That's why, Mr. Dirch, we have the police officers here. We have people who continue, this is the first meeting where we don't have a bunch of cheering and yelling. We had people pounding on the windows back there at one board meeting. So that's why, in case you don't know. And I also like to remind him that if the other board was so good and he was so good, why aren't you on the board now? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Aileen Deveraux, a parent from the Gainesville district. I'd like to speak about a grassroots efforts to encourage parents, teachers, students, and other invested parties in the community to come together, learn from each other, and ultimately support our schools. Many of us are very passionate about our students and their futures. However, we don't tend to engage with others that have differing opinions or views, and that omission can cause misinformation, mistrust, misunderstanding, confusion, and an overall distracting environment that takes the focus away from our students and their success. Well, on a Monday, April 25th at 7:00 PM, there will be an in-person community meeting at Ronald Reagan Middle School in Haymarket, Virginia, where invested partners can converse and engage with one another. For us to work together, we must not limit ourselves to that bastion of freedom of ideas known as Irish Schools PWSC Facebook page or even school board meetings. We should actually try to have conversations with our neighbors, our colleagues, our teachers, our school administrators, and of course, our students. Our expectation is that the meeting will be a step forward. After all, every glorious step, every glorious journey starts with a simple step. And ultimately, we would like to be an example of meaningful discourse that leads to community that learns how to support all children despite our differences, despite our reservations. And we hope to have similar conversations in other parts of the county as well. I believe that this grassroots efforts directly align with Prince William County's recently approved strategic plan, particularly Commitment 1 relating to positive climate and culture, and Commitment 3 relating to family and community engagement. It is truly theory of action as described in the strategic plan. We are a diverse community of people, priorities, ideas, and interests, and we can lean in, we can work together, we can support our educators, we can support our students to make sure that they can be the best they can be. We just have to choose to do it. And honestly, from a purely selfish perspective, it is in our collective best interest to do so, because time flies, and one day, they too will be adults, parents, and perhaps even educators. So if you're on the western end of the county, or you're particularly fond of Prince William County Parkway and Interstate 66, please consider joining us on Monday, April 25th at 7:00 PM at Ronald Reagan Middle School. We would love to learn, listen, engage, and collaborate with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have FPHS students Bryce Henderson, Grace Dubinok, and Jacob Bakosa.
Hello, everybody. Hello, the school board. My name is Bryce Henderson. I'm speaking on behalf of Forest Park. I'm a 17-year-old student who attends there. Today, today I'm here to, today I'm here to promote the mental health awareness walk that we have on May 7th at 8:30. This six-mile walk will help unite the community against the stigma of mental health illness that we fight every day. I would love to see all your beautiful shining faces there as we work together to fight the mental health as a team.
Good evening. My name is Grace Dubinok, and I am also advocating for suicide awareness at Forest Park High School. Last year, suicide became the second-leading cause of death in ages 15 to 24. Young people like myself spend a majority of our time in school surrounded by teachers, school administration, and other young peers. So it is crucial to make schools a place where mental health is supported by these individuals. The goal of our walk is to promote mental health awareness and advocate for an increase in mental health specialists within Prince William County schools. With that said, we would like to encourage you to come and walk with us. We walk not only to spread awareness, but to save lives as well. Help us end the stigma.
Hello. Yep. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Bakosa, and I am honored to be speaking to you about an issue that is struck close to home. For me, the walk will give tribute to a friend that died by suicide. She was full of life and energy, but due to harassment from cyberbullying, she made the decision to take her life. The pain, guilt, and shame that many experienced when she died was very apparent. I'm grateful that I can be a part of trying to make a difference by helping others see that there are people who care and will listen. We will walk to give a voice to those who are no longer here, and we will triumph as we stand together to bring awareness to this epidemic. Help us end the stigma, and remember, you are not alone. Hope to see you May 7th. Thank you for your support.
Oh, I'm so, my bad. Thank you very much, and you guys always do a great job with this every year. Thank you very much. And again, it's Forest Park High School, May 7th, 8:30 AM, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's open to the public.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Thank you guys very much, and we'll make sure we support it.
Thank you.
The next four speakers will be Wendy Haddock, Ken Nar, Kristen Peterson, Kelly Andriola. Andriola.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Haddock. I live in the Okaquan district. My address is on file. On March 9th, I submitted the following question to the school board members. How much money did the Prince William County School District spend to bring the lawsuit or join the other six school districts against the governor's mask optional executive order? To this date, I have not received an answer with a monetary amount. I received a response from the FOIA office, which quoted Virginia Code to me, stating that the requested records could not be found or do not exist. I followed up and received a second response from the superintendent's staff stating, Prince William County School has not received the invoices for this work yet, which is the reason there is no records for this request, offering that I can check back later. Ms. Wall, you stated in your comments regarding the budget at the March 16th meeting that one of your guiding principles is putting taxpayer dollars to the best use, and you stated, it's a trust between the taxpayer and the school board. I completely agree. Was bringing the lawsuit the best use of taxpayer dollars? Did it build trust? Bringing the lawsuit against the mask optional executive order was purely a politically motivated action, which contributed in dividing our community even further. I'm sure you are all familiar with the quote from Abraham Lincoln's speech, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." We are currently a divided community. The school board, administration, staff, and teachers must stop trying to turn our schools into political indoctrination camps. I do not want my children listening to a raging conservative any more than I want them listening to a raging liberal. Teach our children factual information, free from political ideology and opinion. These politically charged actions cause animosity and division that keeps our community from working together as a whole toward a common goal, which should be providing the best educational opportunity for our children. I am asking that every board member, every administrator, and staff member, and every teacher, check their political ideology at the door. It has no place on that dais, in the office, or in the classroom. Only then can we come together for the betterment of our community, our schools, and most importantly, the students. Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, Ken Nar.
My name's Ken Nar from the Gainesville district, five-year public educator, 20-year Marine Corps training, education instructor, and a 10-year instructional system designer. What does it mean to provide a world-class education to the most diverse student population in the Commonwealth? It means each of the Prince William County teachers lead classrooms that are more socio-economically diverse on a daily basis than other teachers potentially encounter in their entire careers. It means our teachers have the biggest challenge of any educators in the Commonwealth. Unlike most teachers across the state and the country, Prince William County teachers must reflect in practice as well as on their practices. It means our teachers have to constantly assess the student individually in an order to dynamically adapt their instructional technologies and delivery constantly in order to properly anchor their learning interventions into the student's prior knowledge and varying cultural backgrounds. One-size-fits-all instruction will not connect with certain strata within the student population. These students may not fail, but they will not maximize their learning opportunities, nor will they reach their potential. Unlike an average teacher with a homogeneous student body, our teachers have to address special needs across a multitude of subjects in the structural media. Our teachers must fluidly bridge language barriers, and they should be multilingual on command. Our teachers have 15 to 20 instructional scaffolding strategies underway at any given time. Prince William County teachers at, at all three levels coordinate their efforts with multi-functional instructional teams and teaching assistants in order to effectively modify the building blocks of instruction on a daily basis. Prince William County teachers need a vast toolkit of exemplars, scenarios, analogies, metaphors for every module they teach to help their students grasp and connect to new and developing concepts. Our teachers have to facilitate relevance for a vast array of students, learning abilities, and family situations. They need the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to positively integrate and leverage the diversity within their classrooms. It means our teachers have to be the most talented and experienced of any in the Commonwealth. Prince William County schools can recruit and maintain only the most mature and experienced teachers, but that's very expensive. Dr. McDade and her administrators can provide the most comprehensive professional development program in the country, but that too is expensive. In reality, it means that Prince William County teachers deserve the best facilities, the most resources, and the highest pay of any teaching cadre in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you.
Next will be Kristen Peterson.
My name is Kristen Peterson, and my address is on file. What exactly is no place for hate, and how does one hold the schools accountable for doing their part? On Friday, March 25th, my son was assaulted multiple times in his classroom with his teacher present. This child, let's call him Student A, continued to push, pull, kick clothesline, smack with a shoe, and eventually Student A grabbed my son's hair, pulled him backwards, and sucker punched him in the face. It started the moment my son walked into the gym, and the video is horrific. Student A did not get the reaction from my son that he wanted, so he continued to escalate the terror until my son ended up with a purple eye. I wrote emails to many that evening, including you, Dr. McDade, and the response from your secretary was to put it off on Ms. Porter Lucas. No remorse for this happening at one of your schools, no apology, absolutely no care for a concerned parent. a concerned parent. I'm a former middle school educator for the fourth-largest school district in the country, and I know what it takes to be successful with this age group: communication. But here, there is none. Do you know how many times my emails have gone into the abyss with no response? I know as part of my contract, I had forty-eight hours to respond to a parent. Not only does this board neglect to respond to emails, but this is also the case with the inept principal at Marcellar Middle School. Time and time again, she fails to respond to emails. Over the past week, the number of parents who have reached out to me about the lack of response and leadership at this school, not to mention the rampant bullying that their kids are being terrorized with, has been overwhelming. No response means no paper trail, no acknowledgement, and no accountability. The same principal who told me that they don't write incident reports. The same principal who told her eighth graders that she was tired of writing referrals for dress code violations, so she was dropping it. She has no disciplinary skills, no communication skills, and no understanding of the Prince William County School policies. The monkeys are running the zoo. The star student who yanked Student A off of my son was ridiculed and taunted for doing the right thing. He should be getting an award, but hasn't. Leadership has a trickle-down effect. Good leadership breeds good leadership, and Marcellar, Ms. Warner never once personally reached out to me, and the teacher certainly hasn't communicated to me that she is sorry this took place in front of her. From what I have read on the news recently, I believe your schools have a problem. Clearly, what you're doing is not working. So why did this bully, Student A, feel he had a reason to attack my son? Masks. My son said the taunting from Student A started escalating around the time he stopped wearing a mask, and my son's absurd mitigations were implemented by you. You should be ashamed. You did this. You were the first bully in this. I believe schools take the personality of the leadership. You decided you were above the governor and in turn led the example that masks equal good and no masks equal bad. Middle school years are hard enough, and you gave them fodder. You gave parents a stage to depay upon instead of complying with an executive order. You gave schools one more way to bully each other, and my son was in the crosshairs. I expect an apology. My son deserves an apology, and it's time you learn what accountability is.
Kelly Andriola.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, Dr. Latif, and the school board. My name is Kelly Andriola, and my address is on file. I appreciate the opportunity to talk today. I want to bring attention to some gossip that's going around schools right now. And I realize, under normal circumstances, we don't want to give credence to gossip, but I think we can all agree that these are not normal circumstances. The gossip is that NearPod will be funded, will not be funded by the county next year, and will only be available as a site purchased. I speak on behalf of many teachers at all grade levels, in all departments, and in every school when I say that all of the reasons that you provided NearPod during distant learning are still valid and necessary. We are still using NearPod. We're using it to increase engagement, to check for understanding, to increase participation, to create interactivity, to promote discussion, to receive instant feedback, and to give students who are absent access to the same dynamic lessons. This was not just a resource to use with Zoom. It's a resource that works best when used in the classroom with teachers and students working together. If NearPod becomes site-based, it will burden individual school budgets that are already stretched thin. It will not be available to all students as it has been for the past few years. The schools that provide NearPod will have an advantage over the schools who don't or can't. Teachers will not be able to share NearPod lessons with their colleagues at other schools. Most importantly, valuable resources would be taken away from some students and still provided to others. Students don't need less interaction and engagement in class. They need more. NearPod is not just another expense. It's a solution. All the reasons we've embraced and implemented the interactivity of this resource are still part of the world-class education that we teachers are committed to providing. If we were on NearPod right now, I would be able to ask you what you think, and no one else would know but me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment time. We're moving on to Student Representative time. We have Ms. Charlotte Flynn from our Woodbridge High School. She's a senior and is joining us this evening. Ms. Charlotte.
Good evening, school board members in Prince William County. I hope everyone is healthy and looking forward to spring break. Tonight, I wanted to address a couple items related to the agenda and future goals. First of all, I want to congratulate our seniors for making it this far in the school year. You're almost to graduation, and I want to recognize your hard work, achievement, and dedication throughout your high school careers. I hope to see all of our seniors heading down successful paths, whether that be college or work, and I want to remind you all that your perseverance and commitment has brought you to the finish line. To the seniors moving on to college, good luck and congratulations. And to the seniors heading to the workforce, I admire your success and determination. I know everyone is set up for greatness and will achieve amazing things. I wanted to recognize an important week for our county, and that is Public School Volunteer Week. This takes place from April 18th to the 22nd, and its purpose is to appreciate the role of volunteers within the public school system. Thank you for your service and your willingness to help our children and their education. Your effort is invaluable. This week is also to encourage all parents and citizens to volunteer in schools. Whether it be at school events or during school hours, I hope all citizens find the time to appreciate our schools and help out for the benefit of our students. Finally, I wanted to provide updates on the starting times and surveys. The student representatives are finalizing the details of the survey on later start times to send to Prince William students. Once this has been completed, the survey will be sent to students through Outlook and Canvas for them to take. And this is an important topic that I encourage all students to share their opinions on because it can critically improve mental health. The pandemic affected us all, and one way we can learn from this impactful event is by addressing mental health needs in schools. I hope with this survey, we can achieve this. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Next, we'll move on to Dr. McDade's superintendent's time. Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, and good evening to all present as well as those who are joining us virtually. April brings many observances with it, and we work hard to recognize those observances in one of a variety of communication methods, including the SCOOP, our end-of-week letter, social media, and at school board meetings. In April, we are purpling up for the month of the military child. Later this month, the outside of the Kelly Leadership Center will be illuminated in purple to honor these families. We appreciate the many sacrifices that are made by our military-connected families to ensure the freedoms we all enjoy in our great nation. April is also Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, and every day, we work to create relationships and support that empower everyone, especially our students with autism, to live fully and thrive in our community. We urge our students, employees, and school communities to take responsibility for promoting autism awareness and acceptance for the thousands of extraordinary individuals facing an autism diagnosis every year. National Deaf History Month is also observed in April, which seeks to raise awareness and build bridges in our communities with deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals. One way that PWCS encourages our students to facilitate a better understanding of the unique needs of different individuals is through the offering of American Sign Language classes. These classes are offered at Battlefield, Brentsville, Colgan, Gainesville, Hilton, Patriot, and Woodbridge High Schools. Additionally, Coles Elementary School is offering an American Sign Language Club. I'd like to share with you a video with more information on this engaging after-school club. Please take a look.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
I started this club a long time ago when my oldest son, who now is fifteen years old, so when he was a kindergarten student here, I wanted to encourage him to socialize with his deaf peers here at Coles, as well as his grandparents are deaf, and I wanted him to learn more sign. And I also wanted to encourage other students here at Coles to learn signs so that they could also socialize with the deaf peers.
Nine, good job.
We teach the basic signs here at club. We teach them how to finger spell. We teach them numbers. We taught them, you know, basic signs so that they can encourage direct communication with the deaf students in their classes.
We can get wise in your horns.
We show the signs. We also use games to try to emphasize the learning of the new vocabulary.
What's that one? Ten, good job.
In the future, when I am older, I could become a sign language teacher like my mother, and I could help other deaf people.
In the club, I had each student color in an "I love you" hand shape, and then we will take the hands that they created today and cut them out and to make a larger sculpture of the "I love you" hand shape. And then, once that is created, we'll post it in the hall in the school so that other students can see the art that we created, and that will kind of expose other children to deaf artists and deaf culture.
You may have noticed the bright blue and silver pinwheels decorating the front of the building this evening. These pinwheels remind us that April marked Child Abuse Prevention Month, which recognizes the importance of families and communities working together to strengthen families to prevent child abuse and neglect. This week is also National Assistant Principals Week. As we navigated the global pandemic, our assistant principals demonstrated steadfast leadership, becoming a source of inspiration to us all. I sincerely appreciate your hard work and loyalty to our students and our families. At this time, I would like to introduce Denise Heebner, our Associate Superintendent for Special Education and Student Services. Denise will be sharing critical information about the development of the 2022-23 Code of Behavior and the focus of changes for the next school year. Ms. Heebner?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chair Jackson, members of the school board, and Dr. McDade. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share an update on the revisions of the Code of Behavior. I'm grateful to have with me this evening the outstanding Ms. Dara Duggar, who's our Director of Student Management and Alternative Programs, who's been leading this work and is here to give you further details on that. For the benefit of the stakeholders who wish to view the revisions that have been proposed at this time, I'd like to point out that our presentation, along with the draft of the document, can be found on the website under the superintendent's time on the agenda. Before I turn the presentation over to Ms. Duggar, I would like to share a few thoughts around the Code of Behavior and the purpose of the document. Our Code of Behavior aligns with our commitment to creating thriving futures for our students. We want our students to have a safe and a positive learning environment that results in academic success for our students. The use of discipline to ensure our students and schools are safe and our learning environment is free of disruption is critical to our learning mission. Often, people think of the Code of Behavior as a document where we outline rules and as a guidance for imposing sanctions for students who violate the rules. While there are rules and consequences for students, the roles and the responsibilities are schools, our staffs, our parents, our students, and it includes information on students' rights as well. Additionally, it includes information around ensuring due process, that our students and families understand the process, and supports available if a discipline infraction should occur. In Princeville County, we understand that organizational coherence is important at all levels, and that training at the school level for staff and teaching expectations to students is the key to success. As outlined in our strategic plan, the goal is to reduce exclusionary discipline through the use of targeted strategies and interventions that set our students up for success. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Duggar, who not only serves as our Division Lead, but also serves on the VOE Committee that provides guidance to schools for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Ms. Duggar?
Good evening. The Code of Behavior Revisions Committee is composed of administrators, teachers at all levels, central office staff, counselors, parents, students, and works in collaboration with the Chief Equity Officer, Division Counsel, and the Student Services and Title IX and Student Equity Departments. The task of the revisions committee is to review the Code of Behavior for suggested edits. This year, the committee continued its review through an equity lens, incorporating changes from the Virginia Department of Education's model guidance, updates to policies and regulations governing Title IX, and policy changes from the 2022 Virginia General Assembly Session. Recommendations and revisions from the committee were discussed and approved by the Executive Cabinet and Division Counsel. Additionally, recommendations and revisions were reviewed by the Superintendent's Principal Advisory Council for feedback. In reviewing the Code of Behavior, the committee identified the following areas of focus for the 2022-23 school year. The need to review the document for equitable and inclusive language, further clarification of the role and responsibilities of school staff, parents, and law enforcement, further clarification of student expectations governing technology use, criminal offenses, unexcused and excused absences, Title IX and dress code and grooming policies. Updates to the summary of discipline codes to include the definition of persistently dangerous behaviors, additional examples of tiered responses and interventions to assist administrators with responding, and updates to reference PWC policies and regulation and procedures. Additionally, the 2022-23 Code of Behavior will include a quick reference guide to further assist students and families with understanding the policy and procedures governing student behavior. Next slide. Revisions related to the 2022 Virginia General Assembly Session include the following. House Bill 4 requires school principals to report to law enforcement certain enumerated acts that might constitute a misdemeanor offense and report to parents of any minor student who is the specific object of such an act... One slide back. There we go. ...to the incident has been reported to law enforcement. House Bill 1129 and Senate Bill 600 requires each local school board to require its schools to collaborate with the chief law enforcement officer of the locality or his designee with conducted required school safety audits. And then, Senate Bill 649 provides that the chief of police or sheriff of a jurisdiction or designee shall disclose to school principals that a juvenile has been charged or may disclose when a juvenile is a suspect or in a violent juvenile felony or any of the various offenses listed under Section 16.1-260G of the Code of Virginia. I will now turn it over to Mrs. Heebner, who will close out the presentation of the revisions for the 2022-23 Code of Behavior.
So I'd just like to close by reiterating that we are continuing to seek feedback and make additional revisions to our Code of Behavior. We will be bringing our Code of Behavior back with proposed revisions for the May 4th meeting, and that document will be available on the website for review. I'd also like to recognize the work of Ms. Duggar and all the stakeholders and team members who provided input and guidance as we revise the Code of Behavior, and thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Heebner. Thank you. Are you... Is that conclude?
That concludes the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Heebner. Thank you, Ms. Duggar. We appreciate both of you and your work that you're doing in this important work. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the superintendent's report at this time.
All right. At this time, because we've been in meetings for a while, we're going to take a ten-minute recess, and we'll be back out to complete the agenda. Okay, folks, if everyone gets their seat back to the dais, and we'll go ahead and start. We're on Board Matters 1701, the collective bargaining certification vote procedure. This is on for action this evening. I have motions in order at this time. Thank you, Dr. Latif. Motion one is, "I move to amend the procedure for submission of employee certification for vote on collective bargaining previously adopted by the board on March 24, 2022 by inserting the words, quote, 'The requirement to provide date of hire as,' end quote, on page five, line 16, after the word, quote, 'Filing,' end quote, and the words, quote, 'Set forth herein,' end quote." Do you have a second for the motion? Do you have a second for the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This kind of statement here is going to be more broadly for a couple of the motions that are going to be laid out tonight, just kind of a little context and background on the process. So while developing a process for passing this resolution a few weeks ago, verbal assurances were provided. Following the adoption of the resolution, glaring errors were evident. And to rectify some of these errors, verbal assurances were made. Due to the lack of guidelines established at the start of signature collection, the date of hire, for instance, was quickly called out as problematic. While I know our team has verbally and even composed a letter to assure the groups that the date of hire would not disqualify signatures, I think for the sake of transparency, the official resolution should be amended to reflect three of these four changes outlined in these upcoming motions. This is not a change in the process, but more of a transparent reflection of what has been discussed with the teachers' union and our division. As a citizen, I would be concerned if I went online to read the original resolution passed containing clauses like date of hire or 90 days of signature collection to then later find out these were waived by the division during the certification process. My goal with these motions is to be transparent and update the official resolution with items that have been both been put in official correspondence and verbalized with the teachers' union. This motion does not constitute a backtracking. In fact, it accurately documents the assurances our division already gave in this particular situation to the union. The public should not have to go on a scavenger hunt to determine what is and what is not part of the certification process. In my view, verbal assurances and other communications should be reflected in the resolutions originally passed. So for the good portion of these, these motions would not change the process moving forward. But given that these were released after the signatures were already placed by PWEA, this fairly does not disqualify them, in this case, for this first motion, for the date of hire. It does not eliminate date of hire for future, the future process. But in this particular case, since they were not told this in the process to collect this information, I am making the motion to basically strike this in this particular situation, but not moving forward with this certification process.
Any questions? Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to be clear for the public that it is just specific for already submitted documentation, but not for anything moving forward. That's my understanding.
That is correct, and that was the intention.
And that's Greg Wade, counsel.
Thank you, because I think that that's been a big miscommunication. And I think it is justifiable to make sure that we yet again explain another way that we have made this exception due to the timing of our procedures being passed versus the timing of previously submitted documentation. Because I know that a letter was sent, but we just want to be very, very clear. Thank you for clearing that up.
Ms. Jesse?
I support this amendment. I think that there's been a lot of miscommunication going out. And I think it's very important that we document what we really mean in a public forum such as this. And that's all I have to say on that. But I support this amendment.
Ms. Wall?
I wish to say that I think it was clear to PWA leadership that date of hire was going to be waived. I also wish to clarify, because I think there might be some misunderstanding out there. This is not a vote on collective bargaining tonight. This is a revisiting of the procedure that we adopted on March 24 for certifying the purported signatures. So I just want to make sure people understand that this is not a vote on collective bargaining on the issue. This is a vote on the procedure that we adopted. These are amendments on the procedure that we adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Okay. Please vote. Are you putting it up, B? Okay. Ms., I'm going to take a roll call vote on this. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Are you keeping track, B? Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
I vote yes, thank you.
Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Ms. Wall?
I vote no.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well.
So the vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Next, a motions in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to amend page five, line 16 of the procedure for submission of employee certification for vote on collective bargaining previously adopted by the Board on March 24, 2022 by striking the words, quote, "set forth herein," end quote, and inserting the words, quote, "the 14-day time period within which to submit the required information shall run from March 24, 2022," end quote, after the word, quote, "as."
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Zargarpur?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on this issue?
Yes, just briefly.
Mr. Wilk?
Yeah. I stated in my piece generally for all these, I just want to explain that, again, this is, again, only effective in this particular case as the reasons explained. Essentially, what this had done is basically taken the day of the signature submission and then subtracted the time lapse between that and when we actually passed the process. And so what that would have done is only given, what, five days? Minus, I can't do the math. But anyways, so they would not have had the full 14 days in that process after we passed the whole thing. So what this is stating is they do have the 14 days from the day we passed this on March 24, as opposed to it being deducted retroactively prior to that date in just this particular situation.
Any other discussion? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Again, I just want to be very clear, since we have issues with transparency being clear, that this is, again, specific to those groups or entities that submitted prior to us passing our procedures for certification. And I do also, I want to piggyback on what Ms. Wall said, that this is just a vote on our process, not on whether or not we are voting on collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And Ms. Wall?
So I feel like this change is actually unnecessary for the reason that either the signatures, either the PWA had the signatures when they said they had them or they did not have them or they do not have them. And changing the date, I don't feel, will make a material difference in whether the signatures do, in fact, meet the requirements of the 50% plus one majority. So for that reason, I feel like this is an unnecessary change. I think what we have in the procedure already is adequate and just wish to say that comment.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote on this one. No further. Mr. Wilk, we're going to take a vote? Okay. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse?
Yes.
And then I vote yes.
So the vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Now, another motion's in order. Mr. Wilk?
I move to amend page five, line 16 of the procedure for submission of employee certification for vote on collective bargaining previously adopted by the Board on March 24, 2022 by adding the words, quote, "the 90-day requirement, which shall be 120 days," end quote, after the word, quote, "2022," end quote. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Jesse seconds a motion. Mr. Wilk, for clarification on this, this is also just in this case?
That is correct, sir.
Wade, language is correct.
Mr. Chairman, it's for any certifications filed prior to the adoption of the procedures.
Turn your mic on. Just say that one more time.
Sorry, yes. It's for any, these changes are for any certifications filed prior to adoption of the procedures on March 24, 2022.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Wilk?
Yeah. This was primarily put because this was, again, a verbal assurance. I understand between our attorney and their attorney that we would do this. So I'm formalizing justice in writing for this particular situation.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I just want to be clear that it was also a written assurance as well, but in full transparency. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For this motion, I also believe that this is unnecessary. We heard from two representatives from the union tonight saying that they collected the signatures within fewer than 60 days. So I don't see any reason. We've already changed it to 90. The Board of County Supervisors procedure says 60, which I think is adequate and appropriate. And then we already altered it to 90, and now we're pushing it to 120. I mean, if they've collected the signatures within 60 days, I don't think that it's necessary to extend it to 120 days. So I would be against this motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
I wanted to address Ms. Williams's comment because without going back and looking, I can't say that that was in writing, that particular one. So I just want to make that clear to everyone without going back and looking to see if that was by email or in a different communication.
Okay. Thanks.
So quick follow-up. Again, the point was transparency in the sense of having it formalized in a written document somewhere, that this was something verbalized to them.
Okay. If no other discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Okay. Mr. Wilk?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur?
I vote yes.
Ms. Wall?
I vote no.
Ms. Wall votes no. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes, yeah, you heard it. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Jesse?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes. And I vote yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no. Wall, motion passed.
Okay. Next motion. Mr. Wilk or Ms. Jesse? Jesse?
I move to amend the procedure for submission of employee certification for vote on collective bargaining previously adopted by the school board on March 24, 2022 by inserting the words "or" a mutually agreed-upon third party after the word "board" on page three, line 20, striking the words pursuant to Virginia Code 40.157.2 and on page three, lines 20, 21 through 21, inserting the words pursuant to Virginia Code 40.1-57.2 after the word "certification" on page three of line 20.
Do you have a second for this motion?
I second.
Mr. Wilk seconds. A discussion. Ms. Jesse?
This is going to be a little bit different in terms of this because this is a critical change in what we have. This is a new amendment. And it's important for me to talk about the why of this amendment. It's personal. First of all, I'm proud to be a representative of the school board in Alka-Wine District. And there's been so much talk about whether or not the vote is my vote or the vote of some certain members is to receive the endorsement or approval of PWA. I have endorsed their concerns and issues without receiving formal endorsement in the past, and I will continue because it's bigger than PWA. This is about teachers for me. And I would like to say, I speak for Dr. McDade when I say this lady will listen to everyone. She has listened to everyone at the beginning, and she will continue. First and foremost, I am the only veteran representative on this board who had the experience of working with the school staff, and that's important. And I wanted, I had a goal of a high-performing student, student performance. I knew I needed a high-performing staff, and God bless me with both. But my most vivid wake-up call, when one of my Title I staff said to me, "Mrs. Jesse, do not have another good idea. We are tired." The irony was that they came up with better ideas that were often more intensive than I would have ever introduced. I've always introduced my staff as the best teachers on the planet because I believe that's true. In my estimation, and only in my estimation, teachers was not. Tonight, I think teachers are here because of money and hours and those kind of things. But I want to say, I think teachers are exhausted. And they were exhausted before you came, Dr. McDade. Number two. My name and reputation is all I have. So when I read the efforts being made by PWA to reserve certification status or procedural framework that you had asked for several times, but to no avail, I was disappointed and shocked. I was even tongue-lashed by a lady from Oklahoma for not supporting teachers and not giving you an opportunity to be heard. I've met with Mrs. Hanford several times by Zoom. I've met with her formally in my home and in the boardroom. Each time was informal. There's no formal recollection. From my recollection, I was asking for a formal process. Third, I'm an elected official in the state of Virginia. I must obtain a number of verifiable signatures by and before my name can be placed on a ballot. Both the school board and Dr. McDade have confidentiality concerns. She does not want to turn over the names of her, these employees, and neither the school board to anyone because of confidentiality. VEA has said they have the same concern. They have to guarantee confidentiality. We, as representatives of the school board, division guarantee confidentiality to our employees' records and cannot turn them over to individuals not meeting that approval. records and cannot turn them over to individuals not meeting that approval. Thus, a mutually agreeable party seems to be the only answer. As for the details of this, it has to be hashed out, as far as I'm concerned, by the lawyers. And then he will bring it back to us. But there has to be some compromise where we can agree on a way to verify these names. It's too big of an issue. Finally, there has been little communication between PWA and the board at an issue. If Mrs. Hanford had asked me to provide a framework, I would not be able to do so because this is a corporate structure. I can't speak for this entire board. So I think that in the future, there has to be an open line of communication where there is transparent communication put in place. There should be no question about who's presenting an accurate point of view. The public deserves better. So this is my rationale for the third-party vote because I don't think either side can agree. And this process has to take place. I represent PWA in your efforts, but I represent people who are not PWA. I represent all teachers because they want their voices to be heard. They want to know when somebody has this great idea like Mrs. Jessie, and they're saying, we're too tired to do this. We want a voice at the table. I think it's too important for us to not work out a third way of working this situation out. And so that's my rationale. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. So with the certification, I believe the only way to do this adequately and effectively is to complete certification with a third party. My constituents need to feel assured that the process was conducted independently outside the school division. I have stated publicly and on record for years, I support collective bargaining. However, my views or other board member sentiments should not intertwine with the certification process. I also want to reiterate that although I believe our division has done its utmost to decrease teacher retaliation, I do empathize with those who feel that an internal verification process could lead to retaliation. One of my first speeches as a board member, as archived on YouTube, was the need to formally address what I described at the time as teacher bullying. Our former colleague, Mr. Gil Trenum, successfully advocated for an ombudsman position. In closing, I think third-party verification will lead to a fair and more transparent method during the certification process.
Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to admit, I'm a little conflicted on this one. When we all ran for office, we had to collect signatures, and we had to have them verified. But that was already a system in place. And one of the things that's really bothered me about this whole topic, and those of you who know me know I've spent a lot of time researching this in many different ways, is that the state did not give us any guidelines. The state did not give us any commission or a board or anything that would help guide localities in this work. And sitting here, understanding, because I am a teacher, I do understand what retaliation can look like in our jobs. I don't know how, my brain cannot make the leap, though, of how people would assume anyone in a central office would have the time or energy to go back after people. I don't think principals would have this information. Excuse me, I'm coughing here. So that's where my brain gets a little conflicted in some of this. But I do also feel like it's important to recognize that we need to have a lot of integrity in this process, and we need to make sure, the public needs to be assured. Excuse me. You're trying to give me water? Is there no water? Oh, no. I don't know if this is mine. Excuse me. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm sitting here with a lot of stuff in my head. This is new for Virginia. Thank you. We did not have collective bargaining since, what, 1977? And when I did my research on collective bargaining, I looked at states that already have it. So I don't have information about what the process starts from the ground up. When I called board members in Maryland to ask them questions about all of this stuff, they were stunned to find out that Virginia did not have a commission, that Virginia did not, that our legislative body did not provide the localities with any way to do this. So I just need you to know where my brain is because it's all over the place. But I think I'll just stop here. Thank you for the water. I appreciate it.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I am concerned about the amendment to our previously adopted certification process. While I believe in third-party verification, I don't know that we have outlined or been very descriptive in what exactly that means, and could cause more problems down the road, and exactly why we're in the situation we're in right now. I think that if we choose to make this a requirement, it is up to us, not the lawyers, to determine what that means and what that looks like. Ms. Zargarpur expertly said the main issue here, and that is the state, when they passed this law or statute, didn't provide any guidance, any commission, any anything. They left everything up to the county or the school division for all of the decisions. I'm not so sure that that, I don't know. I can't comment on, that's just my own personal opinion. What I should say is that I think that that has caused a lot of problems in this process. I hope that we can continue to have conversations around this topic as time goes on because I think it's important for all stakeholders at hand to understand what exactly was passed with this law, the nuances and the differences between a government entity and the school division, this process itself, and where our next steps are, if there are next steps. I think those are all important two-way conversations that need to be had. And that's all I'm going to say on this. Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Ms. Wall?
Okay, I'll go next. Okay, so about this idea, I have maybe six objections. The first one is that, as my colleagues have stated, there are just too many questions about what this would look like and how it would operate. And we would have to argue over every single one of them, which would be a very difficult experience. And many of those questions have no answers. We are in uncharted territory, and we are at a distinct disadvantage. So it isn't in our best interest, such as who pays for this? Is this going to cost even more taxpayer money to administer something that should be so easy to administer through the process that we have already laid out? Second, who decides? We would lose oversight as a board of the signature verification process. We would hand it over to an unknown third-party verifier, and who knows if that third-party verifier will even be neutral? Third, moreover, this would be forcing us to hand over sensitive HR data. We have many employees who didn't sign cards and who are not in favor of this. Regardless, I am uncomfortable with going through something like this. And I think there would be many employees who would feel uncomfortable with this as well. And last, well, fourth, what does this say to our employees that we, as a board, don't have confidence in Dr. McDade's ability to run a signature, oversee a signature verification process with integrity? Is that what we're saying? At the end of the day, we must do our due diligence as a governance team to assure the validity of the signatures. As to the argument as for retaliation, this claim of retaliation, who is going to be doing the retaliation? Who would actually be in receipt of this data? It would be Dr. McDade, and perhaps Chief Human Resources Officer? Nobody else. Do we think that the superintendent would actually retaliate against 5,000 employees? Who's going to know who signed that card? Well, a lot of people have put it on Facebook that they are signers of the card, and a lot of people have done that in other places. I am sure that there are safeguards for the data, a way to do this without alleging retaliation against everybody who signed the card. Obviously, the seven Democratic members of this board are not going to be retaliating against people for having signed a card for collective bargaining. Perhaps it's me. Maybe I'm the one people think is going to retaliate against people for signing this card. Who do we think is going to be the one retaliating? This is a narrative that is not justified in fact. Now, I know retaliation does exist, but no principals or other leaders of schools or anybody else is going to know who signed the card unless somebody told them. And so I also have an issue with confidentiality. Confidentiality was not promised or should not have ever been promised in the signing of these cards. If that promise was made, that's not on the card themselves. But if that was verbally made, that was a promise that should not have been made. It never should have been made because it is reasonable for the board to require the signatures in order to validate them. This is a very serious thing that we are entering into, and it should be validated for the sake of every taxpayer and every student and every family and every teacher and every employee in this division. That validation should occur. And even if we were to agree to a third-party verification, at the end of the day, we would still never see any of these signatures because that has been the express communication to us. So for all of these reasons, I feel like that this motion is not in our best interest. And at the end of the day, it's not in the best interest of students, which my job is to represent the students of Prince William County.
Ms. Wall, Ms. Jackson was next.
Thank you. So I've given this a lot of thought, since it was told to me. We developed a process that was consistent with the county, which, when I was monitoring it, you know, when it came out with the county, it was supported by the majority of the community. And respectfully, I cannot vote on something where details are hatched out later. I need to stand with those in and out in the association, and I owe it to both parties that we have a process that is outlined with integrity. So I am not going to support the third-party verification.
Ms. Jessie?
Ms. Wall's talked about retaliation, and it has not been documented. It has been. We've had, um, we hired an ombudsman, and Lori Williams and I were part of that because teachers came to us and said they would not have a voice and that they were being retaliated against. I was a principal. And the reason I said I was a principal, I have dealt with staff who disagreed, and I've dealt with staff who were members of PWA and people who were not. I don't know if there's something about confidentiality, but no one brought a list of people to my office and said, these people are PWA members. I never had access to their names. So I do understand why they want confidentiality. And I think that, I understand Dr. McDade's point of view, too. She can't just turn over these signatures to anyone. I'm not sure if I'm saying this correctly, but it seems to me that the lawyers have talked, and there's got to be a way that the lawyers can work this out so that these signatures are verified in some way. But it's not a question of whether or not Dr. McDade is capable. She's very capable. And it's not a question of whether or not PWA and their representative is capable. It's just that we have two conflicting points of view. And to work out all the details tonight, we cannot do that. There are questions about how much is it going to cost. We've had no meetings, no work sessions where we talked about the cost. So to talk about cost, to me, is presumptuous because we haven't had those conversations. So I think that for, the simplest way to me, for me, is to have a third party. I don't question whether or not Dr. McDade is credible. I don't question whether or not PWA is questionable. But I do think that this is so important that we cannot slow down this process by not asking for someone who has nothing in this. They have no reason to not vote, look at these records. Now, how they look at it, I don't think this board can make all these decisions. I don't know if the lawyer can make the decision either. I think it may be a challenge. But I think we owe it to this organization and to teachers in general to say, look, we can work out a process where these signatures or either the data, the ID numbers or something, it can be verified. I don't know what PWA is thinking because I haven't been back there and talked to them, but I'm sure that they didn't expect you to come into a room and say, well, we're not going to let you look at anything. We're not going to let anybody look at anything. We're not going to let you look at signature. We're not going to let you look at anything, and we want you to verify. When I put in my amendment, a mutually agreeable party, if you can't agree, then that's one thing. But to not even give that a chance, to me, is a slap in the face to teachers and to what they represent. So hash it out, however you need to hash it out. But I think that, at this point, we should allow a third party or some other way of verifying these signatures or verifying the actual people who want to be a part of this process. And there is retaliation. I've been there. I know it to be a fact. There is retaliation. And he's been there. And to say that there's nothing verified, he's been in the classroom. He knows that there's retaliation. And so, not personally, I'm not talking about you personally. But there is. The ombudsman made a report to us. We did nothing with it. She talked about discrimination. We did nothing with it. So if I'm a teacher, I'm thinking, do I have a voice? And I'm going to say something else tonight. I've heard over and over how we bragged about we were the first to get kids in the classroom. We were the first because teachers asked for more time. We didn't give them more time. We put them in classrooms. They had to learn KMS. They had to learn concurrent learning. They are tired, and they don't feel that they have a voice. And that's who I'm speaking for tonight, just not just for PWA, for every teacher out there. Because I did a Zoom meeting with a bunch of teachers that has never, in my mind, ever complained. When all the stuff was coming down about testing, I'd go to that school, and they'd say, oh, well, I guess we're going to have to change, Mrs. Jessie. But for the first time in my 40-year existence, I had teachers in that Zoom meeting who were crying. They said, we have too much to do. We feel we're not being heard. So teachers need to be heard, and we have to work out a process. We're smart enough. I'm sure Mr. Wade, Wade, you are smart enough to work out something. And I don't know if it has to be a working group or something, but somebody has to come up with a process. If we don't come up with it tonight, I'm bringing it back.
Mr. Wilk? Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I just wanted to say, you know, when it comes to fiscal responsibility, no other board member has proposed as many cuts to Dr. Walt's bloated budgets over the last two years than this board member, and the public record states that, more so than the Republican on our school board. So I do care about fiscal responsibility. And that's all on public record. And for my colleagues' sake, I just was told that by our attorney, that VEA did express a willingness to pay for a third party to verify the process.
Another outbreak like that'll clear the room, folks. Who's next? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I think that the issue at hand is that, you know, again, the statute is not clear. It is up to us. It's literally our responsibility as a board to outline this process. Conversations need to be had. Making decisions or trying to do all of this from the dais and going back and forth because somebody said something some other time, somewhere, I don't think that's good governance. I don't think it's good leadership. I think if we are going to do a third-party verification, we should spell that out, just like we spelled out in the certification process. The only reason we're up here voting on it again is to be crystal clear on what was written and presented to PWA in this case because they're the only group that turned in documentation prior to us doing the certification process. Outside of that, all of this still has to be discussed. We haven't even gotten to the part of whether we're going to approve or not approve collective bargaining. We haven't even gotten to that conversation, and already there are issues. I don't think it does anybody any justice to enter down this road without being crystal clear. That's why we're here. That's why we're talking about this again. To just leave something up to somebody else to discuss, I don't think is very helpful. I think moving forward, I would very much like to see this board take some time out, have conversations regarding the rest of this process because there's still more that has to be discussed even before we get to the point of approving or not approving collective bargaining. We haven't talked about the certification processes or any of the other things that we need to talk about. And I think it's important. I would very much like if this board could have a work session or something of that nature. I know that some of us have gone to trainings on this topic. I've been going to trainings for two years, and it's still muddy-watered. And that's not just with VSBA trainings. That's other trainings outside of VSBA. It's a lot. And I think the public needs to understand this. It's not just as simple as everybody get up here and agree and don't agree and move forward, and everything is happy-go-lucky because it's not. As of today, Richmond is the only locality that's actively pursuing this. Nobody else in the state. This is a big deal. Other localities have agreed or budgeted money, and that's different. Even now, just me saying that, there's murmurs in the crowd. This is a big deal. And it shouldn't be taken lightly, and it shouldn't be left to just have lawyers figure out because it absolutely have lawyers figure out, because it absolutely affects everyone, from the student in the classroom, to the teacher, to the janitor, to the bus driver, to the administrator, everyone, whether you're a part of that bargaining unit or not. It affects this board, any other board that comes after us, any other administration that comes after us. There's a lot more to be had. So I'm, I'm more for clarity, and I would hope that we could, moving forward, err on that side and be transparent in all of the details if we're going to set them out here on the dais for all to see.
Okay. So let me, let me just say, I've been, this is my fifth budget. I've never seen a bloated budget, Mr. Wilk, okay? All the budgets that I've seen have been strung together to support a school division that is among the lowest paid for teachers, lowest paid for our staff in the region. Not a single bloated budget exists in Prince William County. The budgets we delivered since I've been on this board has been a 4.8% raise, a 4.8% raise, a 2.4, which was a 4.8, but pandemic dropped it, 5.0 and 7.0 this year. There's never been a bloated budget. There are budgets that we are putting together to try to catch up with our regional competitors. And so I take issue with that comment. And I've been on this board now five years, and I, I think it's important not to go after members on the dais. Next, this process that we voted on on March 24th is nearly almost identical to the county process, process by which their legal counsel and our legal counsel shared with us. It's been worked on for the last few months. We've looked at it the last couple of weeks, and we went ahead and approved this process seven to one at the last board meeting. This process ensures integrity to the system, integrity on all sides. It's very important to have. I have the deepest respect and trust for our school divisions, senior leadership, Dr. McDade, our human resource team. I believe very strongly they can do this job as it is outlined in the process. I do not believe Dr. McDade nor her senior team will retaliate in this case. I don't see that as even a potentiality. I believe very strongly that they are working with the highest levels of integrity at their core, and it's, and we would not have hired her if that were not the case. Regarding sharing data, I chair the audit committee for this school division as well as serving on the joint audit committee with the county. I serve on the chair of the audit committee at the University of Virginia as well for their board. The highest risk to our system on a daily basis is loss of data. We have thousands and thousands of attacks on our IT system on a daily basis from within the country and outside the country. Saving and preserving our data is the most important thing and the highest risk of any large enterprise. Being the 35th largest enterprise of school divisions in the nation puts us as a target for lots of data that can be stolen. I do not and have not at any point believed that sharing our data with a third party would be advantageous for the system, and it would only increase liability and risk to our employees. So as the process has been voted on and frankly celebrated after the County Board of Supervisors voted for it, I believe that our process has strong integrity, serves the division well, serves our students well, serves those who choose to abide by the process well as well. So at this point, I would ask the board, if there are no more comments, to take a vote on this fine, this fourth motion. And I see no other comments. I'll start with Ms. Ralston. How do you vote, Ms. Ralston?
I vote yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Ms. Zargarpur abstains. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Ms. Wall votes no. Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Jackson votes no. Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Williams votes no. Latif, no. Oh, Ms. Jessie. Sorry, Ms. Jessie.
Thank you. How about yes?
Ms. Jessie votes yes, and Latif votes no.
So the vote is four no, Wall, Jackson, Latif, Williams. Three yes, Jessie, Wilk, Ralston, one abstain, Zargarpur, motion fails.
Okay. Are there any further motions to amend the process? Okay. As seeing no further motions on this agenda item, we will move to Ms. Williams' update on the Governor's School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last meeting of the Governor's School was held in February on the 17th. We had student presentations, which were phenomenal by about three or four student groups. This year, again, we have students who will be pursuing a patent for some of their innovations. The next meeting of the Governor's School will be on April 21st at 7:00 PM at the Governor's School, and following that on May 13th. For those who are interested, there will be the Governor's School Innovation Parks, help me up. Symposium, excuse me. Sorry, the Symposium, which is where all of the students present their innovation projects. I highly encourage members of the public to come and check it out. If you have not been to one or seen Governor's Schools' presentations, I think it is an absolutely amazing event. Dr. McDade, I hope that maybe you and Dr. Calhoun, who is the chair of the Governor's School, can maybe work together to have a few student presentations in the future. We've had them in the past, and they are absolutely mind-blowing. So that's all I have for the update at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, moving on at this point to board matters. Board matters, this is where we have, school board members have their final three minutes to speak on matters that matter to them. We will start with Ms. Jessie.
Give me a second. Okay. Thank you. I want to highlight one event. Woodbridge High School had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for its state-of-the-art gymnasium. This 47-year-old school, under the leadership of Heather Abney, now has a state-of-the-art stadium, concession stand, artificial turf and track. This is a young lady who is representing, I think they're called the SALT Group, a student leadership team. I decided to take this opportunity to recognize other individuals who took a role, who played a role in the additional facilities. It's important because the wait was 48, 45 years. It was a beautiful ceremony. There were student, the student choirs, and these students came in on a workday, so this was phenomenal. I want to thank Dr. McDade for your, your commitment to equity, because 45 years to not have a field, to not have a gym where all the kids can participate was very challenging. I walked, I think we talked about the various people who played a role in this, this, this celebration. Heather Abney, George Washington, and would you please hold this picture for me? Heather Abney is very, you know, I'm not saying that every school should do this, but Heather Abney was the first person to have someone greet you. She has someone greet you when you come in, and she takes you to her office, and you meet with people. And on this particular occasion, I met with Mr. George Washington, and he took me on the walk and showed me the inequities and infrastructure problems. Later, he introduced me to Gary Wertham, who placed me on a cart and took me on the field. It was Heather Abney who introduced me to a, a group of parents called Parents Who Care. And you see Dr. Olsen Flynn on the, on the right hand or left hand side of the picture, depending how you see it. And then there were students in the boardroom, because they had to come in the boardroom to get equitable treatments in their infrastructure. The cost for the gym field was $11,400,000. I want to thank Mr. Al Shiroki and his staff for making this happen, and I want to thank Dr. McDade, who wore her green. I think that was for AKA, wasn't it? I'm not sure. But you notice, if you did notice the cups, the cups were there because it's called a gratitude cup, so I gave a cup to each one of these individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to have missed the ribbon-cutting of the gym and dedication of the field at my alma mater. I do, Woodbridge still holds a near and dear place in my heart, and thank you, Ms. Jessie. I heard you did a fantastic job at the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
I had a good time.
I owe some apologies to Featherstone and Belmont. I missed some activities last week. I was a little bit under the weather, and so my allergies got the best of me, so I wasn't able to continue to attend the, the One Reads and the Nutrition event at Belmont, and Featherstone was still continuing on with their Virginia Reads One book. It was really actually a great book that they've been reading, so I apologize for not being able to make it to those, as well as to Woodbridge Middle School's guest speaker event that they had on the 29th. I did manage to get it together enough to attend NSBA's conference this year. It was filled with a lot of great seminars. I hope to be able to brief Dr. McDade, as well as my board members, on all that was learned at the conference. I think it's important for us as board members to continue to learn and grow and have professional development, as well as interact with other school divisions across the nation so that we can understand where our similarities are, where our differences are, and what great things may be achieved. It is one of my favorite conferences. It's where Ms. Jessie and I came back with the fire determination to have student representatives on the board. It's where I got my first look at what will hopefully be a purchase item for the Governor's School, which is a table, an anatomy table. We first talked about board docs, electric school buses, and so many other things. So I'm glad I was able to attend that. I also want to give an extra special thank you to Supervisor Andrea Bailey and Margaret Franklin, who so graciously honored myself and 21 other extraordinary women on the 30th at Potomac Shores Middle School. Dr. McDade was one of those women, as well as, I don't see her here this evening, Ms. Rita Goss from the school division, and Ms. Carolyn Custard, all who are so well-deserving of the honor. As elected officials, we are called upon on time to time and given awards and things of that nature, but I think it was especially a wondrous event to honor those who work within the school division, especially those who, for their years of service and dedication to students, because they really do and have gone above and beyond every step of the way. So I was very humbled and honored to be a part of that group. Thank you.
Ms.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start out by congratulating Sinclair Elementary School Counseling Staff Administration and School Community for receiving their, their re-ramp designation from the American School Counselors Association. Less than 1% of all public and private schools in the U.S. have ever earned that ramp designation, so the application process is very rigorous, and that's a really big honor, and I want to congratulate them. As for gains and happenings over the past three weeks, I have attended multiple assessments for chorus and all county band and orchestra, as well as assessments, sorry, and as well as all county orchestra, band, and choir events, which has been delightful and wonderful to see the development of music, the recovery of music program, programs in, in Prince William County schools after the pandemic. This past weekend, I enjoyed High School Musical at Battlefield and Mama Mia at Patriot. We have phenomenal talent. These kids are amazing, and they, and they do all of this, and they keep up their grades, and they work hard. It's very important to me to see that we promote the fine and performing arts at our schools. These events take a lot of time and coordination, a lot of effort, so thank you to all involved, all of the guidance from staff and teachers and, and parents and everybody else involved for providing performance opportunities for students across the county. A few weeks ago, I attended Battle of the Books at Buckland Mills with Ms. Jackson, which was very, very fun, and Science Night at Sinclair Elementary School and the ribbon-cutting and naming ceremony at Unity Read. I want to take a moment to personally congratulate the winners of the 2022 Prince William and Assis Regional Science and Engineering Fair and commend them for their commitment to the pursuit of science. Earlier, a few weeks ago, I met with the Virginia Attorney General, Jason Mijares, at LV Elementary School for Read Across America Week, and we had a lovely discussion about kindness, and it was with a class of first graders, and they were so sweet and so thoughtful, and it was a really wonderful discussion. I'd encourage everybody to talk to their children about kindness, because I'll tell you what, kids understand. I was also fortunate to attend a Seapurge underwater robotics competition, first time I've ever been to that kind of robotics competition, been to a lot of others. And the best part of that was talking with students and coaches and sharing in the award ceremony with them. Happening now is an FRC competition at, in Hampton Roads. There are three PWCS teams. Eye Light from Battlefield is one of them, so that's one of the, it's the high school in my district, and, and I would just want to say good luck to Eye Light and to Yellowjackets and the other team that I'm forgetting at the moment. To all families in PWCS who have these U.S. service members serving here abroad, I honor you and your sacrifices and dedication to your fellow Americans in our country. So this is the month of the military child, and there will be a Spirit Week starting April 18th through 22nd, and I encourage everybody to, to follow that and participate in that. To all of our students, thank you for working hard. I hope you, as you move into the review and exam portions of the school, that you will dedicate yourself to your very best work. Deeply troubled by the refusal of PWA to allow for the certification, the signatures that they have collected, Kofi Anan is quoted as saying this, "If corruption is a disease, transparency is a central part of its treatment." What is, what this means to me is that if there is, in fact, employee majority support for collective bargaining, then the board's process should work to verify that claim. The procedure we voted on at our last meeting is valid and fair. It is essentially the same procedure as that of the Board of County Supervisors. I think the process should have required, should, we should follow the process that we voted on, and as it stands, I am looking forward to moving forward on that issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So hashtag a seat at the table. A seat at the table will require those who sit around it to have honest and sometimes challenging conversations and discussions. It does require transparency and adherence to a process. A seat at the table is not to be taken lightly, because when you are at that table, you have to consider everyone's voice. A seat at the, at the table requires a commitment to these processes, a commitment to excellence in your own research, and commitment to being truthful, honest, and open when faced with the realities of what that seat at the table entails. It is not always the easiest and most comfortable seat to be in. And I say this because I know we had a little bit of contentious stuff going on tonight, but moving forward, I have, I've said I've, I, I support collective bargaining. I am a teacher, but I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, and we want to do this right. You do not want to put something bad out there that doesn't benefit the staff, the students, or our community. It has to be done well. So I will be asking hard questions. I will sit and think, and you have to make sure, I am 100,000% convinced, I know that's not a real number, that this is going to benefit the people who it is intended to benefit. I also want to say, give my thanks to Dr. McDade, who has shown integrity in all of this, especially in how she has listened to staff and responded to them. Moving on, I want to talk about my visits this week. We went to the Unity Read renaming ceremony, which was fantastic to hear about Arthur Lee's, Arthur Reed's legacy. I attended a book fair at Marshall Elementary and picked up a few more titles for my one day-to-be-born grandson. Should be coming any day now. I went to Ms. Reeker's room, music room, and posed as a second grader and tricked her when I first entered class. She had a delightful lesson. I visited McCalliff Elementary for their book exchange, where kids could take books that they have already been well-read and loved and exchange them with other students for other books. Thought that was a great idea. I visited several classrooms at Kyle Wilson this week, and my favorite one was the kindergarten room, because they had hatched chicks, and so that was a, a fun place to visit. I did not take a chick home, because I don't think my cats would like them. I took a tour of the arts classes at Colgan High School and saw dance, orchestra, and AP Music Theory. and saw dance, orchestra, and AP music theory. We went to the Music Man one night, which was fantastic, especially salesman number four. He stole the show, clearly. I visited Colgan High School with Ms. Jackson to go to their deaf karaoke night, which was, it was just such a beautiful event. The Finn friends were supporting all of the students there. The sign language students were practicing their signing to different songs. The deaf students were signing to songs, and it was amazing. There was vests that the kids can wear that will connect to the music, and you can feel the vibrations of the rhythm. It was just, it was fantastic. So Deaf History Month runs from March 16 through April 16, so I wanted to make sure I got that in. And I got to go to prom with Hilton High School. Thank you all. Have a blessed weekend. Rest of your week.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, sir. Before I rattle through things, I did real quickly, I just wanted to apologize to Ms. Wall. I misunderstood something that was said earlier in the night, and my remark should not have directly attacked you, so I apologize for that. On 3/24, Triangle Elementary, so I was in Michigan for three days, so I didn't get to go to like as many of events, but I did hit a number of them. So on 3/24, Triangle Elementary hosted the annual spring book fair. It was great turnout. Principal Dever informed me that the event was so well-attended that it went nearly 40 minutes over the closing time to count and make sure everyone was able to pay for their books. On 3/25, I attended the Potomac Shores PTSO meeting and conducted a budget presentation and the impact it has on the specific building with Principal Mergo, and also collected feedback on possibly naming the media center after Hildeberg. On 3/24, I attended the Ashland Bike Rodeo Event, major thanks to groups like the PWC Police, Nova Cycle Works, Mr. Duncan, and the many other sponsors of the program. On 3/29, Patty Elementary had their spring book fair, a lot of spring book fairs. My son with me, and he got a book at every one of them, so he did really well. But Patty Elementary had a spring book fair themed "Under the Sea," really nice decorations, a lot of dedication from the teachers and everyone who stayed as staff at that event. And then finally, yesterday, I was able to carve out a little bit of time to spend my morning with Principal Dever, as he makes his morning rounds around Triangle Elementary and greets all his teachers and kind of makes an appearance in every classroom. So I got to do the walk with him and participate in an art classroom and paint the solar system. And then later on that day, I did visit Principal Siriho at Covington Harper and also made appearances and visited a number of classrooms. So with that being said, I will be done early.
Ms. Ralston?
Yes. No, I'm looking forward, though, to come back and sit with you. That's the only thing I have. Thank you.
Can't wait, Ms. Ralston. Thank you so much. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. I want to discuss the wonderful school musicals I saw and the concerts I heard. I want to talk about the immense talent found in our student body or talk about things that are important to me, Deaf History Month, Autism Acceptance, and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Instead, with my limited time here, I need to address some concerns head-on. I've had the privilege of serving the Brentsville community for the past two years. With that privilege comes a responsibility to advocate for teachers, students, staff, and family in my district, my neighbors. There isn't a job, this isn't a job where I come to the meeting and then leave. The real work is outside these doors. Everyone's voice is considered, even the ones who don't come to the boardroom. I take it seriously, because it is a privilege to have a platform. I have been taught to be humble, reflective, to be kind, and to love my neighbor. It is the very fiber of who I am and who I wish to be. I have always been a public servant. This is why I base my votes on concrete reasons, including listening to all members of my community. While I'm being lobbied for the first time by PWA on collective bargaining, my emails from PWA members are primarily contain misinformation and mischaracterization. I respectfully ask those to please vet your sources. As we move forward to hopefully verify signatures, I would like to remind the public, we have not voted on collective bargaining yet. This is about a process to verify signatures from a select group of certified employees. There's a lot of information circulating on social media, and some of it is incorrect. The county has created an FAQ section to help try, to help staff and families during this time, because as Ms. Williams said, this is a big deal. You can also email me at my board email address, and I will gladly assist within the capacity of a board member. Lastly, I'm going to end with board ethics. School board members shall, number three, ensure they act independently regardless of special interests or partisan political influence, and shall use their position, shall not use their position for political or personal gain or prestige, or for the gain or benefit of friends or political eyes. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, a couple things. We need to do a shout-out. Ms. Williams reminded me, the Independent Nontraditional School has just been recognized as a National Alternative Education Association exemplary practice model school. It's a big deal, everyone. So this is very exciting. So congratulations to Independent Nontraditional School. Last night, I had the opportunity to present our school board budget to the Board of County Supervisors at our meeting last night with them. That went very well. I want to thank the board members, Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Jackson for attending with me, as well as Dr. McDade and the finance staff, Dr. John Wallingford and his team. Thank you all for, I think, a successful presentation. We were able to go over there and present our budget and the highlights of our budget, which include, as I spoke earlier this evening, a 7% raise for all staff, significant monies going directly into the classroom to address learning and achievement for all, and then addressing all of our other core missions, organizational coherence, family and community engagement, and, I missed one, learning and achievement, organizational coherence, learning and achievement for all. Wasn't my last one? Positive climate culture. Thank you, Dr. McDade. I should have that better on my tongue. It was a great presentation. We had a great time last night, and so hopefully that will get passed, and we're hoping the General Assembly comes through what they've promised. Moving on, I want to congratulate our students for completing the third quarter. Each quarter, each week, each day, completing school after being out of school for so long has been a challenge for our students. It is an incredible amount of effort from our staff to deliver the high-quality education they have to deliver, and the students to work hard to achieve all that they are trying to achieve. And so I congratulate them for each day and each step that they take moving forward. We're on to the fourth quarter. Last week were the final days of seniors getting college acceptances. Congratulations to all of our seniors, and hopefully you will have choices to make in the next few weeks. Make sure your FAFSA forms are up to date and complete, and please, start applying for scholarships. This is the time when a lot of universities are offering them, and you need to check the schools you're going to or other outside sources for revenue. Ramadan Mubarak started last, this Saturday, so Ramadan Mubarak to all those celebrating. I want to personally thank B. Simpson, our clerk, her staff in the office, our new addition, Anna Uda Tete. She is, she has put together an amazing list for the school board to keep track of every musical event, every theater production, in a list that's never been delivered to this board ever, ever before, by anybody in the division. Let me be clear. First time ever. And I want to thank them. And so if they are reaching out to you as principals and schools, they're not calling to bother you. They want to know what events you're having, so we can promote them, and maybe moving forward, you know, we can attend more of them. We can get more people to attend them and help you sell more tickets to all the events you're doing, so we can get more dollars into those schools. I want to congratulate Unity Read with the renaming, Woodbridge Senior High School for the ribbon-cutting. Music Man was outstanding at Colgan, and I think that's it. And so for our parents, make sure you follow your school's websites. Look at our SCOOP newsletter. Look at our website pages. Lot of great stories, lot of positive stories about a lot of the great stuff our students are doing. All right, folks, have a great night. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.